If you wait about, I'll tell you in a second here. You are live.
All right, it will be about. I don't know if Tom can hear us, but it's showing live on my screen.
Yep, mine as well.
You want to start, Brian, or no?
I'm gonna start. I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 6:32, March 19th, 6:30, oh, 6:32 PM. All selectmen are present. I am required to read a statement at the start of this pursuant. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by going to the town's YouTube Remote Meeting page So with that dispensed, first item on the agenda, consent agenda. There's two items there, policy on virtual meetings and second, approve open session meetings from March 10th, 2020 and March 15th, 2020. First item, the policy on virtual meetings, Mark had forwarded that to the board. Mark, this is a document that Jim had provided to us based on guidance he received from Secretary of State.
Yeah, Jim has been extremely helpful with this stuff. So he provided the document that I believe the clerks have received as guidance on how to move these virtual meetings forward. So there's a policy the board needs to put in place, which then will govern all of the virtual meetings that, that any, you know, member, any boards or committees from the town uses. There was also the language that you read, Brian, to open up the meeting. And there was language that you may have seen that was necessary, similar to what Brian read, that was included on the agenda posting. So this is fairly stock language that, that he's been provided, put into a policy format.
Brian, I would move that we vote to approve both consent agenda items.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Discussion.
Go ahead, Sam.
I actually looked at both those documents. I think there's some places where they don't fit together very well. And so I think they need some editing. I sent some comments to Mark.
Is this the policy on the virtual meetings, Sam?
No, this is Sam. These are the other two policies that were sent this afternoon, I think is what you're referring to.
Oh, okay, sorry. Not the COVID-19 stuff.
You jumped too quick.
Sorry, okay.
I'm not moving that fast, Sam.
No discussion, okay.
All right, um, all those in favor?
I.
Shay.
I.
Stiver's eye.
Heelyas.
Passes unanimously. Next item, update on impact of COVID-19. I want to start, Mark, with the document that you had forwarded that Aldo had prepared relative to the declaration of emergency.
Before, before we get into it, Brian, do you want just a general update? Excuse me, as to where we are and how things are going?
Sure.
Okay, I'll be brief. So since we last spoke after the governor made, put the additional restrictions in place on Sunday night. We got all of the townhouse staff and some staff from other buildings and, and most of the department heads came to the townhouse on Monday morning. Everybody felt more comfortable standing outside. It was freezing, if you remember, Monday, but the sun was out. Brian actually came, Brian Shay came, and Leslie Chamberlain, the public health nurse, came as well. We were out there for probably a little over half an hour. I thought it was a very good meeting. I think that, you know, people really appreciated the conversation. They appreciated the reassurances that we were able to give. I think it was great to have the chairman of the Board of Selectmen there. I think that that set an awful lot. It just kind of set the tone, I think, for where we are for the new normal. So the employees have been in, in, in buildings that have now been closed to the public. We're not getting an awful lot of phone calls. It's been, it's been pretty quiet. It's been very productive, I think, for, you know, for people that are not named Mark and Vanessa. It's been, they've been really productive, but we've been trying to draw out all these pieces to help people be productive in this, in this new normalcy. Public safety has been, you know, doing pretty well. I think that, and I was talking to Lisa earlier today, they have put policies in place that are trying to make sure that their staff is insulated from this COVID-19. They have closed the fitness room, which I think, you know, it could be a big problem. You know, firefighters in there, police in there working out, there's a call. No one has time to wipe anything down. Everybody leaves for the call. Do you remember when you get back? You know, things like that. So they've done, they've done some things over there. Everything is, is going well. There's no issues. I talked to Chief Achilles earlier today, you know, first question, what can we do to help? You know, so everything is, everything has been going, has been going pretty well. We've been rotating some staff in and out of offices. You know, there's, you know, been no issue with that. People have been working remotely, and it varies from office to office, but there's always been somebody in the office physically. If we go down the road that we don't have to, that we're not able to, if there's a shelter in place and we get to that point, we have the ability to forward the phones to our computers and, and forward the voicemails to the computers and, again, operate just as if we're sitting at our desk, but doing it, you know, from, from remote, remote locations. So, again, everything is functioning fairly normally right now, except for the fact that the public is not in the buildings.
Okay.
Um, Mark, I've, I've got, I guess, I think really just one question, and that has to do with the, with the fire department. I mean, the last thing in the world, you know, we or you should be doing is micromanaging them. But obviously, they're situated a little bit differently than the police department or any other department in that there, there is at least the potential for residing on the premises. Do you know if that is going on? And if so, what sort of precautions are being taken, both for the firefighters, but also for people who they might come in contact with?
So that's a good question, and I can only partially answer that. I can answer the first part of that is that I believe the firefighters are still, you know, working their full shift. They're, you know, living, you know, in the, you know, in the station, so to speak. You know, all I can say with any certainty is that they're trying to treat, you know, their time on shift the same way they would in their house. You're wiping down surfaces. You're trying to, you know, keep those social distancing to the extent that you can. They're not as packed together as they used to be in their old surroundings. So I think you do have the ability, you know, to, to, to maintain those distances. But I can talk to the chief and get a better sense as to how that's being handled with a little more detail.
Yeah, particularly since it's likely that, that, that members of the fire department are going to be coming into contact with members of the community. I, I mean, I would like a comfort level on the steps that are being taken. And again, I, I assume that steps are being taken, but I'd, I'd like to have a, have a, a concrete understanding of exactly what those are.
Sure. No, I will, I will get that for you, and I'll follow up, and then I'll send that out all to the board.
Mark, follow-on comment on that. I don't know if other folks listened to the Mima update call this afternoon, but apparently the state is relaxing the ambulance staffing requirements to require fewer people in ambulances. I don't know if we're doing that, but that would be a way to cut the exposure risk potentially.
Yeah, I believe that we are, and we're limiting the people who are actually going into, into the house to respond to the call.
Okay, good.
Though we are trying to limit that exposure, Sam. That one I can answer.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for Mark? All right. So Mark, why do we go to this declaration document?
Sure. So this was, I'm sorry, what?
No, go ahead.
So this, the declaration of emergency document that I sent you this afternoon. I've been, you know, Vanessa and I have been having several, been involved in several listservs with, be it personnel directors, be it town managers, town administrators. And even though the governor has declared a state of emergency, a lot of cities and towns are declaring their own state of emergencies on, on, over the top of that. And I've been having conversations with Aldo. Aldo has been having conversations with his municipal law groups, and, you know, they feel that Aldo's opinion as of today was that, you know, there is really no downside to doing this. And in some ways, it does further reinforce the seriousness of, you know, this pandemic that we're, that we're dealing with, even though we don't have, you know, any, any positive, any positive tests on any residents at this point. He felt that it was, and again, I've been hearing this saying all week, belt and suspenders to what the, to what has been done at the state level.
Okay. So I think it's appropriate for us to do this. I don't know that we're going to act any differently, whether we issue this or not, but I just, quite honestly, I was looking at one of the updates that Chief Achilles had distributed, where, and in it, he listed a bunch of municipalities and cities that had declared emergencies on their own. And, you know, quite honestly, I didn't even think to do it, but knowing that there are a number that have done it, I just think it's in our best interest to do it. And, but again, continue to act as we are.
Brian, comment, it looks to me like that potentially gives us more flexibility to do a variety of things, having it there. Maybe we already have that power, but formalizing that seems to me to put us on a little higher ground if we have to do other unusual things to respond going forward.
Yep. And I know in talking to Mark in the past, we have, other boards have issued this. It hasn't been done since I've been on the board that I recall.
2012, the, the micro, came through town. That was the last time I believe it was done.
You know, that was certainly an instance that was not a statewide situation. That was limited to certain communities. Certainly what we're going through now is not only a statewide, but a nation, nationwide instance. But, but Marty, seems like you had a question or comment?
Yeah, I do. And i- in terms of, of optics or otherwise, or reinforcing a message. That makes all the sense in the world to me, and however we can do it, whether it's, it is, you know, continuing to do with, in, in terms of what we're doing with the website and everything like that. My concern with this, and maybe it's a concern that can be LA'd, is, is kind of two sides of the same coin. Number one, what does this allow us to do that we are not currently able to do? And it was, it's, I mean, I took a look at the statutory authority, the, the Civic Defense Act and the like, and mo- it just strikes me that most of the things that we would want to do in a, in an emergency, we can already do. And if that's the case, I, I worry why we need something that gives us authority to do some things that we don't currently have and what those things might be. So is, in Mark, in your discussions with Aldo, what, what additional authority does this give us?
So I, I think, I think that comes back to my belt and suspenders comment, Marty. I, I don't know that it allows us to do any more than, than we currently can do. It just kind of puts it all in one place in terms of, you know, Aldo wanted to make sure that, you know, all the mass general laws and the, you know, that are referenced in here that basically, you know, give us the authority, you know, from, from the, the Acts of 1950 onward, you know, that gives us the authorities that pretty much, you know, you know, we're exercising at this point. I, I don't think, I don't, I hear, I hear you, though.
I, it looks back to my point. I, if, if we can already do things, and, and the governor's declaration of emergency, I mean, deals with appropriations, deals with the, the ability from us, for a financial standpoint, to deal with things. And, and I, if that's the case, if we can already do everything that we need to do, then it, it shifts to my second question. What does this allow, and by us, I mean anyone in the town, whether it's a department head, whether it's you, whether it's the Board of Selectmen, whether or not, whether it's some other board, what does this give us authority to do? Because I, I, I don't want to open a box of, of the ability to, you know, exercise some sort of authority without knowing exactly what that is.
I think, I think the policy simply puts into writing kind of what we're doing now, what we're, you know, the, the way we're operating now. So I will say that in the initial conversations with Aldo, when we talked about, should we be doing a local declaration when the governor has already done a statewide declaration? Aldo said, there's a couple of things to consider. One, what does it get you beyond what you already have under the state, the state declaration by the governor? The second thing is, what is going on in Southborough that may be different than what's happening in the majority of the state that requires you to do a separate declaration? Since, and that was initially Aldo's position, he wasn't sold on doing something like this. But after the phone call this morning, you know, again, he, he, he felt that there is no, there's no downside to doing this. But to your, to answer your question, Marty, I'm not sure that it gives us anything more than we may currently have, other than, you know, to chime, you know, chime in, in, in concurrence with the governor that this is serious on the local level as well as the state level.
Mark, is, is Aldo advising us to enter into this one way or the other? I mean, obviously, he's read through it. He finds it legally sufficient for us to, you know, consider, but is he willing that we actually do it or not?
He was the one that prepared it, and he was the one that, that recommended that we do it.
I think, if I may, I, I think this just puts it all into one document, what we're allowed and not allowed to do, and the statutes in which we're allowed to do it. I think it made a lot of things clearer for me as far as the emergency expenditures and kind of putting in place for me who the local civil dispense organization is and who makes that up. Now, whether that's spelled out in the statute, I imagine that it is. But for me, I think it just put all the information in one document, and I, I found that to be extremely helpful.
I'll agree with Lisa. My read through it, I was fine with it, and I, I, I don't see a downside. That was my question for, you know, counsel, did he, does he actually recommend that we do this, or is it just being provided to us for consideration? If he's also recommending that we do it, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Brian?
Yep.
I make a couple of points. I, I'm, I'm in agreement that I think it's, it's worth doing for a variety of reasons, including a clear communication to the, to the residents about the situation. I had two issues that I mentioned earlier. One, I think the documents need to fit together a little better. On the declaration, I think it's worthwhile specifying this is declaration of a local state, state of emergency as to distinguish from the state and the national thing. And second, I think that the, the authority to do things with this, currently as it written, it's the town administrator. And I would add, in conjunction with the local civil defense authority or agency, however that's defined there, I think that's a joint process. And there's one other thing that, that says public works facilities, DPW facilities are, are not accessible. And I think we need to have parentheses, parentheses with the exception of the transfer station, which I think is still the current situation. Is that true, Mark?
Yeah, I think, but I think you're getting into the other, you're getting into the other document.
Both documents, yeah, they have to fit together that way, so.
You wanted to get, you wanted to get it all out first.
Yeah. So anyway, I think, I think they work together, and they should work together and use the same defined terms and so forth in there, so people don't get confused when they're reading different labels and different documents. But I think it's a good thing to do, certainly encourage it.
I hear what everybody's saying. I, I, I will, I will, you know, I think it's important for it to be unanimous, but I would, I would ask that that, that in there, since, since, since it seems like everybody's intent is to clarify authority that already exists, that we make it clear that this state of emergency does not confer authority to any town official beyond the authority that currently exists, either in the town code or state statutes. I'm really worried about it being a, a, a potential vehicle for somebody exercising authority that we can't foresee right now and that we've granted by, by making this declaration of emergency. I'm very worried.
My only thought, not a bad idea, Marty, my only thought is if you start outlining, you know, what exceptions to this, you know, what, what it does not confer. I mean, what, what's in there is what it does confer. If you start adding in what it does not confer, then, you know, that list needs to be exhaustive.
I don't want to, I, I don't want to add in a list of things. All I want to do is, and again, if, if I'm wrong, that what we are doing with this document, if we are conferring some authority that doesn't currently exist, I want to know what that is before I vote on it. And, but, but it sounds like what, what everyone wants to do is simply make it clear that what the, what the process is for conferring authority that already exists. But again, if we're, if we think we're conferring something beyond what already exists, I want to know what it is before I vote on this.
I would too. And I don't know, I think we are, but if there's concern, then I think this needs to go back to Aldo for his opinion on that. And I want to see that opinion in writing, and then if any adjustments need to be made. Obviously, he presented this to us in a fashion that is ready to be executed, voted upon and executed. If, if any of us are not ready to do that, I would have no interest in voting for it tonight until, as you started out, Marty, saying, I think it should be unanimous as well.
I agree.
I agree. And I think one of the whereas statements in this does seem to confer a fairly broad set of powers to, as it's written, town administrator.
But a whereas is not a binding part of the agreement, but.
The implication is there. So anyway, it's worth knowing. And I think, Marty, to your earlier point, I think it's useful to ask Aldo the question pointedly, you know, what does this give us that we don't already have in state law or, or other regulations?
And maybe, Brian, one idea could be to, as, as our, as our vice chair is an esteemed lawyer, that he, you know, be asked to go to Aldo and ask him these very questions. And then also with that, you know, ensure per Sam's points that, you know, the two documents gel beautifully. And then, you know, we can have a follow-on meeting and, and hopefully vote to, to approve. That's my recommendation, anyway.
Okay.
That makes sense. I'm happy to talk to Aldo.
Sounds good.
I'm fine with that.
All right, all right, let's do that.
And again, I'm, I, I apologize for being somewhat of a pain in the neck, but, but I'm just, I'm very wary about, about opening a door to additional authority when it doesn't sound like that's what we want to do.
Yep, nope, I hear you. All right, Mark, you want to go to that next policy on staffing of departments during the pandemic?
So this is, this is something that I'm going to give Vanessa all the credit for this. She went out and, and again, you know, we try not to invent the, reinvent the wheel. She went and found some similar policies in some other communities that were looking at these things. A lot, if you read through this, a lot of what this, you know, says and does are things that we're already doing. I think the newest piece to what we are doing would be, would be five and six in terms of discretionary travel and vacation policy. You know, I, I just want the board, you know, I, I want to make sure that, you know, the board is comfortable with this. And, and I think, you know, again, all of the rest of this, I think, is what we're doing already. But, but I do want the board to, you know, to, to back this so that everybody understands that it's not just coming from, from one person.
So I would move for discussion purposes that we vote to approve the policy as provided.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other comments, discussions?
I have.
And I guess, I'll just touch upon the, the last part that Mark did as well, because he and Vanessa are both reached out to me over the last couple of days with concerns about staff that have vacation time, either that they're on now or that is planned for the short term, that is going to take them in a place where they need to take a plane to get there, and they're going to be at airports to get there. And is there, you know, does a quarantine period apply to them before they come back to work? Does it not? And we just needed, I think it's important that everybody participate in that discussion about, you know, what our feelings are on that. I'm leaning towards the side of caution on this, and I would advocate for that quarantine period. Again, we're just still in the stage of this where we've, you know, the, the spike is starting, and we have to do everything and anything that we can to control that, that spike of this and stop the spread of this.
So my, my only thought on that, Brian, and, and now that you mentioned it, I mean, my thought on that is, we have no idea where any employee has gone, whether, whether it be an airplane, whether it be to BJ's or Wegmans and be around lots of different people. I mean, just the fact that they happen to take an airplane. You know, I mean, once you start down that path of requiring that, you know, where does that level of, of policing stop?
You're certainly right, Dan, but I think that airplane opens up the door to go someplace where it's one of these hotspots, like State of Washington, for example, or whatever. So it's not a perfect definition, but it seems to me that's a, a useful distinction. And it's, again, not going to cover the BJ's example or, or other relatively nearby places, but it seems to me it's worth at least having that caution in there.
Yeah, it's, I don't know. You got people who go to hospitals, you got people who visit elderly, you got people who may go to, you know, to New York for a weekend, you know, which is a hotter spot right now on the East Coast. I mean, I, my point is, where does it stop? You know, like I said before, once you start putting something in place, you better be pretty exhaustive as to what those, you know, you know, you know, what, what those things could be. And I, I don't know that, again, we, we ask that people be responsible in the event that they are going someplace that is, you know, where there's a high likelihood of, you know, where, where there's been a spike or where there's a lot of cases. I mean, maybe we ask them those questions, but to automatically require that they self-quarantine for 14 days or so just because they took an airplane somewhere? I mean, I don't.
Boy, Dan, I, I tell you, I disagree. The, when I looked at this, my reaction was that, that the, the language that says are expected to self-quarantine wasn't strong enough. I mean, I'm, honestly, if I knew somebody had been in an airplane yesterday or in the last week or something like that, I would go nowhere near them. I mean.
So if someone took an airplane to the Cape for a weekend.
That's a.
That's a quarantine because they were on an airplane.
Again, the, every, every medical person I've heard talk about this says that you need to be, I mean, when I go through, walking through Hockington State Park, I keep at least six feet between myself and anyone else. I, 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 I just think that, 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 that this is an instance where we should send a very strong message. And the, I guess the, the follow-up to that is to make sure that if people want to cancel vacations, that they're not going to lose vacation time. I mean, I, the beginning sentence to that is that we discourage, you know. um, you know, travel. I, I think that's what we should be underscoring here, and I, I don't, I, I don't have a problem at all with requiring self-quarantining for anybody who gets on an airplane.
Yep. Marty, that's consistent with some of the guidelines too, because they say if you're close to somebody for fifteen minutes or more, you're at risk, and so there's no airplane flight that's less than fifteen minutes. Everybody's breathing the same air there.
So how about a, how about a bus to New York City or a train to Hartford or New York?
I, I think that's covered, Dan, by groups exceeding twenty-five people. You have more than twenty-five people on the bus.
I don't know. I, I, some of this I get, eh, again, that we can come up, we could be here all night coming up with a variety of examples of, all right, well, what about this? And again, you know, the very simple example of going to, going to Stop and Shop or Wegmans and happen to be around a, a lot, you know, a fair amount of people. Just look at the, what the lines were last week, um, you know, at some of these stores, and you're waiting in line next to it, but you can't really put six feet between everyone in a line. So I, I just get, I, I don't think the sentiment is a bad one. I just get worried about, all right, if, if you're gonna single out, you know, certain uh, criteria, you, you better be pretty darn finite, you know, uh, you know, be, because you're gonna have, you, you could easily have a variety of examples and say, whoops, you know, why didn't we think of that? I mean, um.
Dan, I hear you, but, but in this instance, eh, airplanes to me seem particularly problematic. Geez, I hope, you know, people who, who, the residents of South Row are not getting on buses and traveling to New York. But, but I, I, my, my inclination is not to have the perfect be the enemy of the good here. And I think as written, it's a, it's a, it's a good policy and one, um, um, very supportive of.
So one of the things that this kind of evolved from, it started, one of the drafts had discussed travel to Level Two countries or not.
Right.
Or Level, Level Two or lower. And, you know, I wanted to be stricter than that because, you know, while the plane on Wednesday may fly from a Level Two country to the United States, on Tuesday, it may very well have been in a Level Three area. You, you have no way of tracking where the plane itself went and people who were on the plane came from, and what level of, um, decontamination that the staff there may have put to it. So, so I was much more in favor of just going strict, stricter with that. And, you know, if you're in a situation where you're not meeting the social dis, the recommended social distancing requirements and the number of people, then I think you, I think we're, we're best in requiring the self-quarantine.
So Brian, I'll throw one more out. Eh, again, I was at a, I was at a wake, uh, just a handful of days ago, and there was a line around the corner. All right, so everyone was standing, I mean, where do you, i- i- if you limit this to just a handful of the, you know, the, the plane travel and, you know, all right, nobody can go to a wake, and if you go to a wake, you better make sure that you, you bring your six-foot ruler on their end of you, and otherwise, you're gonna have to self-quarantine for fourteen day. I mean, what, again, not bad sentiments as to what we're trying to do, but where does it stop?
So Dan, the one, the one thing I'll mention, you know, I, I hear you, you know, you can, we can sit here and, and we can find scenarios that don't fit in this and things that, you know, that make sense. Um, a- and that's kind of the line that, that, you know, Vanessa and I kind of straddle all day is trying to figure out what makes sense and finding out, figuring out what we can control. We can't control everything. But all I know is that there are some, you know, if there are some cir- circumstances or situations that employees could, could get into or could do, which potentially could infect, you know, um, you know, a department or a building. We don't have very big staff. So one person can throw a huge monkey wrench into our public safety response, our townhouse.
All right, so let me ask another question. Do we have the legal authority to require this, and who is going to police it?
This is not illegal. I've talked to Labor Council about this. It's not a legal issue, it's a policy decision. Um, and, you know, if the board wants to put this in place, you know, he doesn't see, you know, any, you know, there are no legal issues, you know, a- as far as he's concerned with this.
Who's gonna monitor and who's gonna watch that, that to ensure that individual did not leave their house for fourteen days or, uh, you know, didn't go anywhere?
Nobody, like, current quarantine.
I'm concerned that they're not coming to, they're not coming to work, they're not coming to, you know, the town buildings and everything and that, Dan, so. Like I said, we, we only can control what we can control. If the kids are being told they're not in school, are they all staying home or are they going to Miami Beach? You know, I, I, so.
If I may add as well, I, I, I worried about this as well, and I worried about restrictions, but at the end of the day, our job is to make sure that the people's business gets done in the town and that we do what it takes so the town offices don't shut down. So the business can get done and payroll can get funded, and if we can put a little thing in place, as restrictive as it is, if we could put something in place to give a small measure of comfort that, that may be a way that we can keep the townhouse open and, and the business that needs to be taken care of done. Um, my fear is that, you know, in some of these instances, you get an employee that gets sick and, you know, uh, I'm sure there's backups for everybody, but at the same time, one person gets sick and then another person gets sick and, you know, ultimately, then we have a bigger problem on our hands.
Mark, are these people who are working from home right now anyway?
No, there are people who, um, there are a couple of people who are working from home. All people who are under quarantine right now are working from home, yes.
So is this gonna actually have any effect?
Uh, if they're able to work from home, no. But, you know, in the event that there are people who, you know, don't have the ability to work remotely, cannot be productive remotely, um, then, you know, i- it would have an impact, yes.
Then are, and are they gonna be paid for fourteen days and not do any work?
I believe if the, um, you know, if the vacation is approved, um, and they have to be quarantined when they come back, they may have to use vacation and personal days to cover the quarantine time.
And what if they don't have that?
Then they would, I would, I would say that they could use any leave time that they have available to them, which would include sick time.
And do all, does every employee have at least fourteen days of sick time?
I would defer to Vanessa, Dan, but I think ninety-eight percent of our employees have, um, more than, more sick time than they could possibly use.
I guess, I'm, I'm with Marty on this one, in that, uh, this may not be perfect, but I think it's important to get it in place, and it includes a line at the end that says can be updated, uh, as appropriate by the selectmen, so I think we can continue to monitor, and if we run into problems, we can always make changes. I had two things in there. I sent Mark a note with some wordsmithing comments, but two things. One was the DPW facility being open, the, the, um, swat, the, uh, transfer station being open. And second, eh, in terms of the quarantine thing, I think there was a gap in there in terms of somebody who's uh, come back from a trip within the last fourteen days, I think ought to be, uh, specifically addressed in terms of asking them to quarantine as well. So if somebody came back less than fourteen days ago and came to work, um, it may be the horse is already out of the barn, but, uh, I think we need to address that as well in here.
Do we have any instances, Mark, where people have come back to work without a quarantine?
No.
Okay.
No.
Maybe we can do without that then.
Okay, all right.
Mark, did you say Labor Council reviewed all of this and is recommending that we execute it as is with no changes?
He is record, you know, he is not recommending, Dan, he is simply saying this is a policy decision of the board, not a legal decision. So you, you.
Opinion on it at all?
From a legal perspective, no.
Should.
But there are, but, but this is not, but again, not reinvent.
Anyone be looking at it from a legal perspective?
Well, this is, these are existing policies in other communities that have been reviewed, and, you know, I mean, if, if you want, if you wanted to have council take, you know, take another look at this, that's fine.
I just, I mean, you know, again, I'm not adverse to the, to the concept. I just don't know that we're there with, with how limited it is, and, uh, you know, in, in, in some of the repercussions that could come from this thing. I threw out, I rattled off just some things off, you know, that, that I was thinking, and, and, uh, you know, I'd like to be supportive of this. I don't know that I'm there yet, and I'd hate to, again, like all of these things, to the extent we can have, uh, unanimous votes, I'd love to. That's not always the idea, that's not.
Hang on, hang on one second, Dan. Uh, looks like we lost Lisa. So I'm gonna give her a second to, uh,
Okay.
I'll back in. Sorry for this holdup here. I just wanna make, I, I just wanna make sure that we're all still participating, that's all.
Yeah, Lisa just sent, she, she just sent me something, says she's trying to get back in.
All right, let's give her a minute. She's having trouble connecting, Mark. If you could just shoot her a note that she can call in. We won't get the video, but she'll at least be able to hear, and we can hear her.
Okay.
Too bad it was going so well.
I'm doing it my way not to touch anything, because I know if I do, the same thing will happen to me.
Yes.
Was anybody else on the Mima call today?
The first one or the second one, Sam?
Uh, the first one didn't work, the second one did.
Well, the first one, yeah, if you went in, if you went in a minute before, right at it, Vanessa and I both tried, and, you know, they said, sorry, room's full. Contact the administrator.
Yeah. Uh, interesting point, people from Western Mass and the Cape to some, Dan's point, I guess, about, uh, you don't know where people have been. They have, uh, a large portion of their housing is second homes. They said the city of New York seemed to have moved to the western part of Massachusetts or to the Cape now, to get out of New York City, so.
That's why the spike in the Berkshire, so.
Yeah, that's right, the virus is on the move. They closed the borders.
I found that fascinating, um, Sam, that with the manager that was on the phone on that call from Mount Washington, one of the tiniest communities in Massachusetts, basically, you know, was concerned about wh- what do we do with our border when we, we know,
Yeah.
viruses rushing toward them.
Yeah, his comment was, you know, I have one pair of gloves and two masks. What am I gonna do?
I know.
Western Mass is where they're going, because all the ski resorts are closed in Vermont, so we can't go up there.
Uh, ripple effects all over the place. Hard to, hard to anticipate.
Any feedback from Lisa, Mark?
Uh, she was just trying to get back in. That's, that's all I know. I did suggest to her that if she wanted to simply call in, that, you know, that would suffice as well. We just wouldn't get the picture.
So Brian, my only point is I think this may require, at least from my perspective, uh, some additional review. You know, I, there's just so many scenarios to think about. I mean, what if, what if something happens, uh, you know, there are cases in Massachusetts. What if somebody went to a town where, you know, there are more than five cases? Should they have to self-quarantine because they went to that particular town? I mean, where does it, where does it stop? And if we stop it at, uh, you know, a particular mode of travel, is that really, uh, you know, are we really covering the, the universe of, of, you know, potential infectious, the ways to become, you know, infected?
Well, not to be doomsday, Dan, but then open up the town halls again, open up the buildings back to the public. And, oh, cause then I don't know why we're closing them.
There's people who have said just that very thing, Mark, that.
And that's, and that's fine. I mean, but you know what? If we're gonna insulate the employees and try to protect, you know, protect, you know, people and, and, and telling people that, you know, you can't travel for work, you can't go to conferences, you can't go to meetings. But if they wanna do discretionary travel, you know, and, and potentially, you know, in, infect the rest of us with discretionary travel, when we're saying can't work, then.
Uh, good, hang on. Welcome back, Lisa.
Sorry about that, my computer completely went black and died, so I scramble to get another one, I'm good.
All right.
So I'll share with you, I, you, you're, you're, your audio and video are very scratchy, Lisa, but obviously we'll all do the best we can.
I'm gonna just try and call in.
Okay.
Um, it, I guess, you know, a question for, you know, others, you mean, my company hasn't put these kind of restrictions on us yet. The Army has put some, uh, restrictions, but not like this. I mean, are, are, you know, I, I guess I'm wondering, I'd, I'd like to be consistent with what normal guidance is in industry, in, y- you know.
Yeah, so.
What the governor's putting out, is this what's happening at the state level that we need to make sure that we're doing at a local level?
It's happening at the federal level, Dan. I mean, it's, it, we, I can't do it. I can't travel.
I can, and I'm a federal guy, Marty.
I'm sorry?
I can, and I'm a federal guy as well.
So I'm a private sector guy who can't. So these restrictions are very similar to what my company has in place.
Mine too.
Quite honestly, these are, one document that I sent to Mark and Vanessa as we were putting this together was, so we do a decent amount of military work or engineering work at, uh, Naval and, and other facilities. And this is a lot, some of this came from restrictions that they're imposing upon us. Um, that they're not, you know, allowing, you know, private sector people, uh, anywhere near the bases if, if any of these, uh, conditions that we've listed here apply. So, uh, I think.
All right, at some point, I think we, we, I think everyone on the, on this probably wants to move this thing along. I've been, I've been, uh, firing holes in, into this thing for the last twenty minutes. You, you're probably tired of it. Um, you know, like we've seen on the other documents that you've talked about, if, if the, you know, it, it's, it's likely not perfect, but something we, that it sounds like everyone on this call wants to put into place without any modifications to it. If that's the case, then if someone may, wants to make a motion and we move forward, I, you know, to another topic, I'm okay with that.
No move.
So Lisa, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you. I'm on my phone.
Okay, excellent.
Much better, Lisa, that's, that works well.
Okay, you did need that, excellent. So, Lisa, the, we've actually moved the question on this to call, to vote on it, that was moved and seconded, correct?
Now, is with the, just to, just to clarify, this is with Sam's amendment, just to clarify, the closing of public work facilities with the exception of the transfer station, right?
Of DPW.
Okay.
Yeah, with the exception of, so the transfer station stays open, in my opinion, right?
All right, and with, with my reservations noted for the last 20 minutes, I'm to be supportive.
Okay, Shay, aye?
Alenda, aye?
Heely, aye?
Diver's, aye?
Rashia, aye?
Excellent.
So I, I, I just wanna say, I think on behalf of the employees, and Vanessa can chime in if she'd like, I, I think that this is, this is much appreciated. I know, and Brian can speak from, you know, the Monday morning and meeting with employees and everything and that, I think they, they truly appreciate the steps that are being taken to try to, you know, you know, make sure we do what we can, and Dan, we can't do everything, I, I, I get that, there's gonna be gaps, there's gonna be holes, but, you know, again, this is your policy, and we can revisit it as those gaps and holes become apparent.
Yeah, all right.
This covers the various employees and everything, I, I'm not sure, and Brian, you know, slap my hand if, if, if I'm jumping the gun on this, but, it, it, it would be helpful for me, obviously, Mark, you're getting it, but I also think it might be helpful for, for folks who wanna either tune in live, or, you know, watch a video, to get in person by Zoom, uh, updates from at least some of the, the major department heads at our next meeting. Okay, sure.
Sort of operational status?
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be helpful, again, I, I'd like to hear that, you know, obviously, Mark, you're getting it and, and had been very good about communicating it to us, but I, but, but, but I also think that the community at large would, would take some comfort maybe from hearing from their public safety folks from, from the, from the DPW. I would expect maybe the Board of Health could weigh in, I'm not sure if, if we need to hear from other departments, but those are off the top of my head.
Yep. And again, I did check in earlier today with Leslie Chamberlain, public health nurse, who has been an outstanding resource through this whole thing. She confirmed with me that we're still at zero positive cases in town. And, you know, while that is obviously good news, the emphasis, in my opinion, still needs to be on making sure that we stay at zero, and it's, that's, needs to be an ongoing effort, with ongoing commitments to the guidance that's out there for preventing the spread of this, so. But I do, I think that would be good, though, to have, have that input from, from the public officials, Marty. So, a couple of other things that I just wanted to run through, it shouldn't take too much time, and if others have other items as well, we can discuss those. For future board meetings, obviously, I called the meeting, the emergency meeting this past Sunday night, and I did that specific to the actions that the governor had taken earlier that day. In my opinion, I thought that that had significant impact on town employees and operations at the townhouse starting that next morning. My goal would be to call meetings with, providing the 48-hour notice, consistent with the open meeting law requirement, I wanna do that to the best extent practical. But as this is an ever-evolving situation, if another situation arises where I think we need to get, you know, together as a group on a sooner and quicker basis, I will call an emergency meeting again, but, for everybody on the call here and everybody in town who may be listening, it is still my goal to comply with the 48-hour notice to the best extent possible. I think it's important for us to continue with these meetings on Zoom, until the governor starts to lessen restrictions on gatherings, I just think it's important to, to keep distance and to not put people at risk. You know, that said, it's difficult, you know, we've had a little bit of technical issues tonight, just among the eight of us that are on the call. It's going to be difficult to try and open meetings like this up for public involvement and public participation, I think that's gonna be a challenge. Given that, it's my intent to only include on agenda items, you know, to limit any items and prevent from putting on an agenda, an item that by its nature would invite a significant amount of public participation. And I think it would be important to hold off on those items, again, until we reach a time where the governor starts to lessen restrictions on gatherings and the public can, can start to attend our meetings. That may not be the case all the time, but to the greatest extent possible, I'd like to limit that. And if others feel differently, I'm certainly willing.
Makes sense, Brian.
Or a different opinion.
And, and maybe Tom can work on technology that would allow more two-way communication between us and the public, there may be techniques to do that, it'd be great.
Certainly, we can effort it, and depending on how long this goes, at some point in time, we're gonna have to get back to business as normal, and it may be that we need to reach out to Tom to find a way to allow public participation through this sort of a medium, but, but for now, I really wanna limit it to our actions to this critical, critical business items to the greatest extent possible.
Yeah, Brian, I'm with, I agree with Dan on this, and, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll take the opportunity to say that, that in, in not the easiest of circumstances, Mark, Vanessa, and yourself have been doing a terrific job keeping us informed, making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's about public meetings and notices and everything like that, it's, it's, it's much appreciated.
Well, appreciate that, and there's certainly a whole laundry list of others that need to be included in that as well, Tom and Leslie, and the police and fire chiefs, among others, so. So one thing, now that we have this Zoom in place, what is the board's opinion on other town, boards and committees in town scheduling meetings? And, because some of the limitation, or one of the limitations we have with Zoom is that we can only host two meetings concurrently, correct, Mark?
That's correct.
So, again, I've at some point in time, we have to get back to life as normal, but, in a lot of ways, I think that the business of the town to the greatest extent practical really ought to be focused on getting to the point where, where this curve starts to stop spiking, flatten, and we start to see a light at the end of the tunnel. And I'm not saying that nobody can meet, but I guess I'd just like to get others' opinions on, on, you know, guidance that we ought to give boards and committees on holding meetings at this time.
So Brian, aren't there other, I mean, like us, we need to meet for certain things, I, I trust that business still moves forward in town and that, you know, the ZBA still, you know, has some permitting they need to do, the planning still has some work that they need to do. I mean, there, we don't wanna just shut the town down.
Yeah.
You know, there's things that still need to happen, and, and that would require them to meet, would it not?
Yeah, it would, and, you know, so one of, so when we met Monday morning, I'll just use Planning Board as an example, because Karina had asked the question about, you know, applications that they may receive for new projects and public hearings. And, you know, they're in a position now, right now, they can't hold a public hearing, because they don't have a room to hold a public hearing in. So I think that, in a lot of ways, I think a lot of proponents are gonna be taking a step back at this point, so maybe that takes care of itself from that perspective, I know that there is talk of special legislation that would ease time restrictions to prevent, like constructive approvals of permits and, and projects. I, I guess part of me is, and I just wanna be sure that there isn't a perception out there that, like some major issue or some major project that, again, by its nature would have a lot of interest in the public, that something isn't acted on at this period of time where it's so difficult for the public to attend meetings and participate. And I'm not saying that any group would, would do it, but I just don't wanna give anybody that perception that that's happening, and that anybody's taking advantage of this situation to.
Right, and I think it works both ways, you don't want the perception to be, hey, the Board of Selectmen shut down the ability of others to, to do meetings, and, and by, as a result of that, you know, and, and they must have known, because you know, the, the, some of these theories are out there, they must have known that X was coming down the pike, and they just shut it down by prohibiting that entity from, from meeting, so it can cut both ways.
Yeah.
My, my only thought is, if we have the ability to do this, if the, if the governor has, you know, given us the ability to have these kinds of meetings, to the extent that we can expand the technology to allow others to meet, and, and I know Tom is, it sounds like he is working on an ability to expand this to a point where there would be able to be a level of public involvement, I just don't wanna be, have us looked upon, like, the Board of Selectmen is allowed to meet, but they've shut down the ability of anyone else to. Surely, we have to ensure the technology is there, and if that's there, and there's an ability for them to be able to meet, and, you know, and then again, by extension, an ability to have, you know, a quote-unquote "public" meeting at this time and in this kind of way. I think we should look for ways to do that, instead of restricting people's ability to, to try.
I guess I would have a slight variation on that, I mean, I'm assuming, Brian, that we are not going to include on any of our agendas, items that aren't either time-critical or critical to the COVID-19 issue.
That's my intention, that's my intention, that, that would be the limit of agenda items for the foreseeable future, in my.
I would communicate the same thing to other boards and committees, that, that, obviously, they have, I, I, I agree with Dan, I would not, I would not put handcuffs on them and say you can't meet, but say our very strong recommendation because of the, the inability of the public to participate the way they normally would at meetings, and, and as well as health considerations, as well as, quite frankly, the, the, the crush of work that it would take on the tech side of things, that, that boards and commissions only meet if there are items that are time-critical, or that specifically go to the COVID-19 crisis. I think that's a perfectly reasonable position to take.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, and Marty, I, I don't disagree, my, my point is, I just don't wanna us to be looked upon that we are shutting the town down, including, and, you know, there's people building homes, there's people who may wanna move their business into town. We have empty buildings sitting out there, I don't wanna us to be, to look like we have shut down, locked the doors, nobody can do anything, you know, until, who knows when, when, if there are ways that we can continue to allow our community to, to be as normal as they can in these not-normal times, I'd, I'd, I'd like to see us try to do that.
A good point, Dan, and I think one of the things, I've been looking around other towns' websites, trying to figure out what some of them are doing, and maybe, Mark, if you could certainly keep an eye toward, other, everybody has the same problem, CONCOMs on a 21-day approval cycle for a lot of things. So if there are other ways that other people are doing this, it would be interesting to know what some of that looks like, and maybe they thought of a solution that we haven't run across yet, to find ways to keep some things moving, at least.
Well, I know that, you know, most cities and towns, and again, Vanessa can chime in, she's been my conduit for, you know, for, for most of what's going on around us and, and around the state. Most people are using Zoom, I have not seen anyone who's been doing a public hearing. Sam, I think, you know, we, we talked earlier about what MEMA, or I've talked with some of you about what MEMA had, not MEMA, MWRA recently did with their budget hearing for, you know, they had to have a public hearing, and they accepted comments, you know, prior to the meeting, but then they also set up a, a link where people could go and try, and, you know, and offer live comments. But I think Sam had indicated that nobody actually used that live link, but, so, you know, I, I do think that if this is gonna go on for a period of time, we need to find ways in order to allow that, you know, allow the public to have input in the meetings the same way they would if they were sitting with us. It's gonna be a little bit difficult, it's gonna be a little bit clunky, but for purposes of public hearings and things like that, we're gonna need to get there, so. That's, that's something, you know, even Tom and I were talking about earlier today as well.
Can we take the position, as Marty said it, and maybe put a time limit, I mean, our kids are out of school for another two weeks, maybe, you know, put a time limit that we can readdress it in time week, short of a policymaking board or whatnot, I mean, and I agree, I think, but for me, the biggest concern is the public not being able to participate in a meeting, if they so choose to. So, I, I agree with what Dan said and what Marty said, but to take it a step further, maybe we look at it in two weeks, and, and, you know, change, you know, open it back up to everybody, or, I mean, I, I don't know what the answer is either, but I, I worry that the public doesn't have the ability to actively comment, and, and maybe there's a way to find to do that, maybe if you have a hearing coming up, or you're having, you post your agenda, and then you give the public a timeframe to submit questions or whatnot, and if you do use Zoom, maybe they can answer them, you know, I just worry about the real-time connection that if somebody's watching our meeting, they may say, oh, well, so-and-so said this, and I had a question on that, and they don't have the ability to ask any clarification.
All right, you got that, Mark?
I don't know.
I got it, Tom, Tom's, Tom's to-do list, next week, we'd already chatted about looking to expand the capabilities, you know, when we start adding more boards and committees in, and, and getting back that, that public comment piece of this to, to the extent that we can, so, yep, loud and clear.
All right, so we're not making a decision tonight as to whether or not this board is gonna prohibit other boards or committees from operating to the extent they're able to. We're not making a decision on that tonight, is that right?
No, I think, I think what I heard in summary, we're doing that exactly, that, we're not putting handcuffs on other boards and committees, other boards and committees can meet to the greatest extent practical, you know, I would say, until we reach a time where public participation can be coordinated through Zoom meetings, that those boards and committees are highly encouraged to limit agenda items to critical or COVID-19-related business items as they relate to that board and committee.
So, but, all right, so, yeah, and this is the lawyer in me. What does that mean?
Go with what the engineer says.
What does that mean, right, what is, you know, COVID-19, how ma, how, you know, again, I come to, I come back to that, if there's a builder who needs a permit for something, or there's a, you know, some, someone needs to go in front of planning or ZBA, and it's not something, I don't know, does everything require a, you know, a, a, a public hearing and a public comment period, I mean, are there things that, where, where normal business can take place through, you know, and I just picked out those two entities in particular, you know, through a Zoom meeting, and maybe like Lisa may have said, giving people, you know, the ability to look at it and, and be able to comment within, you know, X number of days afterwards, and then a decision can be rendered, or something, I just, again, I don't want us to, I understand we're, we're kind of in lockdown, but I don't want us to, you know, basically tell the community that this, this, this community has shut down, you may not do any business here, you may not, you know, even ask to, you know, request a permit if you need one, because we are locked down until further notice.
But Dan, what, what, what Brian just said would allow everything you just described.
He only said, no, he said it's COVID-19 related.
No, he said, but, but Brian, why don't you repeat what you said?
So, what I, what I, prior to the COVID-19, it's like critical business specific to that board, or Critical business specific to that board or committee.
What's critical?
Or so.
They they can determine.
That's for them to decide.
We've got reasonable people on the boards.
You know, it's all different committees that have. Again, we can play the.
My point is, why can't they be allowed to conduct business as they see fit? I mean, you you know, whether it's critical or not, if they have the ability. To continue normal operations and do it in a. Uh, you know, in a safe environment.
Yeah.
Why can't they, why can't they do that?
Brian said allows that. He just said we strongly encourage them though to only limit it to those things. And that's perfectly reasonable.
Yeah.
And they're in position to.
He's baffled at me.
Just, I'm I'm wondering what's happening to Brian's words when they're getting to your computer.
Uh, all I heard was was COVID nineteen related and critical, and that that is an incredibly small. Uh, you know, group of items that we are saying another board is allowed to do.
No, strongly encouraged.
Let them do it.
Strongly encouraged.
Strongly encouraged.
Okay, if if someone says, again, someone's saying strongly encouraged. It, you know, what, anyway, I I don't want to belabor the point. We've already been here over an hour and and I thought this is going to be a fifteen minute meeting. Probably on me, but. You know, our words have meaning. Words have meaning and I and I don't want to look like we are hamstringing others. When they could conduct as normal operations as they are able to.
So, Dan, just to just to put a little meat on the bones, I guess. So Planning Board is going to be meeting on Monday night. They have a couple of public hearings that they simply are looking to continue. Um, uh, you know, because they are in a public hearing process. Conservation has a meeting next Thursday that they're going to be looking to continue. Um, in the public hearing process, there's nothing before ZBA at this point. And and there is nothing critical um, that I am aware of and. Um, I don't think, you know, Vanessa can check me. I I I don't think there's anything critical at this point. That we are not doing that we should be doing. So, um, to to the to the point I think that that all of you have made. We need to work over the next week to figure out how to handle. These public hearing components to allow public participation. So that we don't get to where you don't want to be, Dan, that we're shutting down certain things. Um, you know, uh, and 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 simply becoming paralyzed. That's not.
Beautifully stated.
Sorry.
And Dan, we can adjourn the meeting and you and I can argue about this for another hour.
While we adjourn. Um. One thing that I want to make sure that gets issued tomorrow was a clarification on fields and playgrounds as well. And it came up Monday and the Recreation Director asked about issuing permits to organized groups. And the answer was no. Um, and he said, until when? And my answer at the time was until schools are back in session. Um, but one thing I think it's important is. That I really think that we limit any activities at all on town fields. And playgrounds, particularly playgrounds that have. Climbing structures that people are going to be touching. Like, there's all sorts of. You know, questions about how long the the virus lives. You know, on certain objects, different materials. And I just think that we're better off keeping people away from. Away from those objects just to, again, ahead, get ahead of. Do everything that we can to stop the spread of this. You know, we're we're still on the spike on the curve and we need to take actions to. Prevent people from getting exposed to it. So. Um. You know, whether, nobody can set foot on a field, I'm not going to say. I think that we need to have people observe. The social, the proper social distancing. But if they're. I don't know, throwing a baseball back and forth. I don't know how long the coronavirus lives on on the leather of a baseball and it goes from hand to hand and.
So now, all right, Brian, I'm going to start to to.
There we go.
This is crazy. This is crazy. You 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 want to try and restrict people from tossing a ball. You know, this is, we are going way overboard. Uh, you know, parents have to have some ability to allow their kids to play. Nobody can stay cooped up in a room. For twenty-four hours a day watching Zoom or or, uh, you know, meetings like this or or. You know, or reading, reading books all day long and have no human interaction or no ability to. Uh, to get any exercise on a playground, uh, you know. What kind of police state do we think that we want to institute tonight?
So I think this is. About the book comment.
Dan, can I just say, as you were talking, a little thing came in from WCVB. One of the Boston Celtics players has just tested positive for coronavirus. And whether he got it from a basketball, whether he got it from contact with another person, we don't know. I guess I'm saying I would just.
If you want to put out some advisement. You know, but I don't know that I want to be telling people again that we are in such lockdown. That you may not throw a baseball, a frisbee, shoot a basketball. You cannot do anything. Because, you know, i- i- if you want to alarm the community. Uh, you know, go ahead and put those, that kind of guidance, those, not guidance, directives in place. If you want to offer some guidance. Uh, you know, that is, that is CDC backed, uh, uh, you know. Fine, you know, that stuff is already out there, but. My word, if we are going to get to a point where, you know. You know, you've you've gone to a supermarket and you didn't wipe, you, Southboro resident, went to a supermarket. And you opened up a door handle but didn't wipe down that door handle before and after you used it. Um, you know, you know, put that in place for every. E- every business in Southboro that someone may may go into right now and. And to run in communities.
Aren't we talking about town fields use?
Yeah, you know, part of me, part of me feels like, and we'll see who gets this reference, but the Burgermeister Meister Burger.
Yes.
Christmas thing, like prohibiting fun, prohibiting toys and all that, and that's.
That's you, Brian.
But. I think that to the best we can on town facilities, town playgrounds, town fields. I mean, I'm not going to police everyone's backyards to make sure they're not doing this. That's crazy. But. I think that, and I'll tell you, the playground part, particularly with. Plastic climbing structures was a recommendation offered by Leslie Chamberlain, our public health nurse. So I think that that is not getting too crazy. I think that's following through and implementing a recommendation. From a board of health official.
Hey, hey, Brian, how about, how about this as a suggestion? I mean, I I agree with you completely that we shouldn't be. Issuing any permits for organized groups on any of the town fields. It seems to me that's a pretty easy call.
I agree.
Um, a- and and tonight, um, why don't we um, request that that. Um, the t- towns. Um, health officials come up with a list of recommendations for the use of. The town fields and playground facilities. And it's just, well, it'll be that. It'll be a list of recommendations. I I I hadn't thought about, my kids are in their twenties. I hadn't thought about the 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 thing about climbing, but you know what? It's it's actually a pretty good point. Because supposedly that's 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 an easy way that the uh, the virus can be transmitted. But rather than us trying to do it here, leave it to the um, to the uh, public health officials in the town to come up with a list of recommendations. For the best practices on using the town playgrounds and fields.
Yep.
And and Brian, don't forget Southboro Golf Club. You know, if you want to do something, we got to be consistent. People are going to be, you know, pulling the uh. Uh, you know, pulling the flags out and putting the flags back in if they're.
Good point. No, no looking for lost balls either.
Yeah, you can't look. That's right, because who knows how long that ball's been sitting there.
You know, it's interesting. I'll I'll tell you, though, I I don't think we're 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 far away from a state level or national level from. Um, hearing things exactly like this. I mean, if I go into my office, I have to get advanced. I have to give advance notice. I have to give notice where I go in that office and what I touch. I mean, so i- it it's already there in a lot of respects. And you know what? I think that's good because I'll know where other people have gone. And I I I I. I I think it's important to take whatever we, steps we can, we can that are reasonable and and they're not police state. Steps to uh, make people think about how they can transmit this virus and as a result, not transmit it.
Right, exactly. Okay. Uh, does anybody have any other, anything else they'd like to bring up, any other fun that they'd like to?
Brian?
Destroy and.
How about the election, Brian?
Uh, so that was, that's one thing that I did want to touch on, but I know that Lisa had indicated to me.
Yep.
That she would likely recuse from that.
So Brian, and I and I will add. Um, if part of the, I don't know when the last day to take out, i- i- the, has the last day come and gone to take out papers?
So actually, before we get to that election stuff, is there any other topic, anything else? COVID nineteen related, anyone wants to bring up?
Can I raise?
Vanessa's hand first, Sam.
Um, just uh, uh, something on a more half full note, I wanted to let the board know that our new. Public health nurse who will be taking Leslie Chamberlain's place came to work um, today to to get started early. Um, and she has great experience working for the Sudbury Department of Public Health. So she wasn't due to start until about April tenth or so. Uh, but she's volunteered to come early. So we wanted to let you know that she's, you know, onboarding with Leslie. And spending as much time here as possible.
Excellent. Thank you. Sam?
Uh, two quick points, uh, one from the Mima call. Apparently, a lot of towns are working very aggressively to track the costs associated with the response here. In light of potentially getting federal reimbursement or state reimbursement. So I'm assuming, Mark, we're doing that and being very aggressive in terms of. Tracking whatever we can reasonably allocate as a cost for the effort here.
I know public, Sam, I'm sorry, just to answer that quickly. I know public safety is doing that and and the suggestion has gone out to a couple of other departments to be doing that as well.
Good, good. Uh, second, I've looked around other towns in terms of some of their responses. And things that pop out, I think, for example, many towns are doing a current scorecard on their homepage or easily available. What is, what's the current case count, which is a little depressing in some ways. On the other hand, I think it's a question. People have in terms of positive test results. Um, also, um, easier ways to maybe find a way to get in the, on the list for notification. Uh, we've got our e-alert system, but one of the lists, one of the items on the list is not for COVID nineteen. Um, alerts, for example. So the more we can make it easy for people to. Sign up for alerts through that e-alert system and know that it's there, at least on the website, could be an interesting thing as well. And Arlington has some interesting stuff for remote meeting scripts, for example, and checklists for T for. Uh, boards holding meetings in terms of the things you want to do. Uh, to make sure that you're complying with the state laws, et cetera, for open meetings and so on under the circumstances. So. Again, looking around at what other towns are doing, I think can generate some interesting ideas.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing for me.
You're going to talk about uh, uh, the elections and.
Yeah, let's talk about the election, so.
On that note. Whoop, 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 whoop.
Okay.
My my point is, I wanted to say, is this, is the election piece the last piece? For this meeting? And if so, and I, and my guess is it is, if so. I have the ability to take out papers tomorrow. I would then, like Lisa, I'm going to recuse myself and not to the point where I'm just going to mute or take myself off the screen. But as you may know, two of our former colleagues. Um, uh, had very public, which is what's incredibly unfortunate. Uh, ethics complaints made against them because they happened to recuse themselves and. Uh, and and didn't physically leave a room. Okay, so I don't want that to ever happen. It was, it should have never happened to those individuals. It should not happen to Lisa or anyone else. It was awful. And uh, what I am going to do then is is I want to sign off. And suggest that Lisa do the same, but she can do whatever she wants if this is the last topic you're going to discuss.
The, it's the last topic that I have to discuss again.
And I planned, sorry, Brian, I plan to do what Dan did. I'm I'm signing off as well.
Yeah, I have no other topics.
All right. Kalinda's standing off.
Russia signing off. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, Lisa.
All right, so just, uh, seven fifty-six. Uh, we're down to three, myself, Mr. Healy and Mrs. Stivers. And with respect to the election. So obviously Jim had sent. Uh, the email to us two nights ago, I guess, so recently. Requesting that our board take action with respect to the election. He and I have had a couple of follow-up phone calls about that, and he sent me an email earlier today. And I'm going to read it before we engage in the discussion on it. And it's a statement from Senate President Karen E. Spilka. On elections. Uh, it reads, "The ability to hold elections is fundamental to the continued functioning of our democracy. We are also aware that we must protect the health and safety of the public during this unprecedented global pandemic." As such, the Senate has determined that moving forward with traditional elections at this time would put our voters. Election workers, volunteers, and others in our cities and towns at excessive risk. The Senate will therefore take action on Monday. To give cities and towns needed flexibility to address this situation. Including temporarily postponing municipal elections. It will also ensure that there are robust mail and absentee voting options and protections to maximize voter participation. When elections do occur. The next paragraph deals with. Certain state senate elections that are scheduled to be held March thirty-first. That does not apply to Southboro. And she ends with. "The right to vote is one that the Massachusetts State Senate cherishes and wishes to protect. We hope that the actions we take now will help ensure the integrity. Integrity of our elections as this public health crisis evolves." So with that said. It appears as though the state senate is in a position that they're going to take action on Monday relative to local elections. So be my recommendation that we take no action. And wait until Monday to see the action that the state senate comes up with.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. And just as an aside, I had offered an opinion to Jim. And I don't know how, you know, whatever comes from the state senate action, how it's going to read. But it really would be my recommendation that. I I hope they don't put it on the Board of Selectmen to get involved in the election process. Because I think that. They ought not be relying upon an elected board. To impact an election in any, any way, shape or form. I think it's. I would prefer that they give that authority to the registrars of voters in towns. Not the Board of Selectmen, but that's. I'll just leave that the way it is. Jim was going to pass that comment along to the Secretary of State's office as well. Well, I just think it's too easy for people to to think that we're somehow trying to manipulate an election uh, to. Have the outcome come some some way. Now, I would never take action that way. Any action I would take, if it does fall upon the board, would be. In what I think is in the best interest of the town as a whole, but. We'll see what comes Monday.
Agreed.
That all makes sense and um, knock on wood that the state senate. And well, it's not just the state senate. Obviously, it's got to be, it's got to go through the normal processes, but that we get. Um, um, flexibility out of whatever the legislature and the governor do.
Yep, exactly. Okay. With that, I will move to adjourn.
Hey, Brian, one last thing.
Yeah.
Um, um, uh, do you have a sense when you may want to convene again?
Uh, we're at Thursday now and all likelihood. Uh, you know, it's probably not a bad idea if. At least the three of us agree to shoot for, or when's the soonest we could do it, Mark? Monday night, Tuesday night? Maybe try Tuesday night?
Tuesday night at this point.
Why don't we try Tuesday night uh, at this time, just to. You know, again. top, the agenda, I, agenda items, Mark, COVID-19 related topics, period. And we'll see what develops statewide and nationwide between now and then.
Yeah, give us a chance, I'll, I'll, I'll make every effort to touch base with Aldo before then. So hopefully we can have the um, uh, the emergency question proclamation, declaration back on Tuesday night. Um, and also, doesn't have to be all the the department heads at once, but maybe the, maybe starting out with the public safety folks. That might be helpful on Tuesday night as well.
Sure, okay, I can, I can facilitate that and Marty, what I will do is I will forward the draft of the agreement um, and 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 loop you and Aldo into the conversation just to try to get that started.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you, everybody, and uh, so I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment?
Stivers, I.
Shay, I, we adjourned at 8:02. And again, special thanks to Tom for all your efforts and facilitating this Zoom meeting for for our board and for the town to be able to watch, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good night, all, thank you.